This time, trustees, I'd like to move forward. Meeting's in order. Open workshop, Bayonne Board of Education, Wednesday, November 28th, 2018. I'll take a roll call. Trustee Alonso is here. Trustee Kuhn is absent. Trustee Finney is absent. Trustee Wondell is absent. Trustee Munoz is here. Trustee Ryan is here. Trustee Vellato is here. Vice President Wilbeck is here. President Broderick is here. We have a quorum. Superintendent, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Maida. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This month, I had the opportunity to speak at the Robinson School, Laresco School, and Vroom School induction ceremonies for the newly elected student council members. I also met with representatives from the Boy Scouts of America regarding recruitment strategies. On November 13th, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Deggman and Mr. Copez led a team of principals, directors, and supervisors to learn about the new updates to the state monitoring process from the Hudson County Office of Education. Dr. Deggman will update you on the changes taking place in the DPRs for our first full visit in 2020-2021. Additionally, the New Jersey Department of Education released a median student growth percentile last week. Dr. Deggman will refresh your memory on the assessment component that is a requirement of both teacher and principal summative evaluation scores. Dr. Deggman?
Thank you, Dr. Wanko, and good evening, trustees. In order to assist school districts in achieving a high-quality education, the New Jersey Department of Education is clarifying, aligning, and simplifying the state's systems of accountability, including ESAA, Title Programs, New Jersey Q-SAC, and School and District Performance Reports. With clarity, alignment, and simplicity in federal and state oversight, New Jersey schools and districts will spend less time, energy, and resources on providing evidence of compliance, and more time, energy, and resources on teaching and learning. Over the last year, the NJDOE has conducted comprehensive feedback sessions in that engaging various stakeholder groups in shaping ESAA and Q-SAC state evaluation model. I had the opportunity to participate in these work sessions. A number of important innovations have been incorporated into the system of accountability due to this feedback. While measuring student proficiency in English language, arts, math, and science continues to be an important requirement for federal accountability, the NJDOE believes that, and this is important, student progress should also be measured and reported as continuous growth towards proficiency for all students. And I believe Dr. Wanko shared the accountability profiles with you, which are still embargoed. But when we look at instruction and program, the DPR is to measure the district's capacity to provide a thorough and efficient education that is compliant with New Jersey statutes and regulations. The following is reviewed: student performance, academic progress, curriculum aligned to the state standards, and appropriate systems or supports are provided to students. So, looking at the Q-SAC DPR, in addition to aligning New Jersey student learning standards, some of the highlights that you'll see moving forward, and one that we were already talking about in the curriculum committee, is world language. And it says, "If a computer software program is used to deliver instruction, the district must demonstrate that there is sufficient evidence of face-to-face interaction with a certified teacher." So again, something that the curriculum committee is working on. And the second indicator that we saw pulled out of Q-SAC was that there is a systematic process within each school to identify the needs of students, deliver support, and as necessary, review, remove barriers to learning. We've made this a priority with our district goal, and we made this a priority with the board goals. We've been implementing the multi-tiered system of supports in K-2. And as a matter of fact, on January 2nd and March 18th, we will be bringing in our contractors to work with us on providing those support services to K-2. And then we'll move forward next year with the next grade band, three, four, or five. So a lot is going on in Q-SAC. What happens is Q-SAC, they used to come in and do a little desk audit. What we're going to see now is they're just going to pull the information right from our databases. So that's how they're going to make it better. But again, it's something that we have to start July 1st because there is a one-year look back. So even though it's their coming in 2021, the look back will be July 1st. So we will be working on all our DPRs. As Dr. Wanko said, with respect to MSGP, just for the new trustees, that has to do with student growth percentiles for teachers. And what happens is the New Jersey Department of Education provides MSG data for qualifying educators, and that's a measure of student growth on state assessments, and it comprises 30% of what the teacher's evaluation. That is changed for this current year, the year that we're sitting in, to 5% for the qualifying teachers and administrators. So we are currently in receipt of MSG scores. We will be sitting with those teachers in grades four to eight that receive them, and they will be having face-to-face meetings with our eligible staff members. So again, once that information that is confidential is released, I can have a further conversation with the curriculum committee and the board as a whole, where we are with MSGP and our accountability profiles. Thank you. Any questions for me on Q-SAC or MSGP?
Seeing none, I thank you, Dr. Deggman. As Dr. Deggman has just updated you on the overall Q-SAC process and touched upon indicators specific to instruction and program, Mr. Copez will now highlight the changes related to his office, which will include operations and personnel. Mr. Copez?
Thank you, Dr. Wanko. As Dr. Wanko just stated, I'm going to give you some highlights in the areas of operations and personnel that we will be working on as we move to the next Q-SAC review. As there are many changes in these areas, the operations indicators are used to assess a school district's performance and capacity in reviewing school district policies related to code of student conduct attendance, alcohol, tobacco, as well as other drugs, and harassment, intimidation, and bullying. We will also be working with our school climate teams, reviewing the educational law enforcement memorandum of agreement, and looking at our school health services. To ensure the policies and procedures for the code of student conduct are communicated to all stakeholders and are inclusive of both disciplinary measures and supportive measures, we have a committee that will meet on December 7th to review the code of conduct policies and procedures using the NJDOE compliance checklist to ensure it contains all requirements as listed under 6A16-7. We're also going to verify how the information is distributed to all stakeholders. The personnel indicators are used to assess the district's performance and capacity in fulfilling the requirements for staffing and for staff development, including assurance that staff evaluations are aligned to teach NJAC. Support is provided to novice teachers. Professional learning is provided to staff based on the professional development plan, the PDP. The district PDP is aligned to the district's goal and budget. Staff are appropriately certified to meet the qualifications of their positions. Staffing attendance and budget systems are in place, and supervisory processes result in appropriate goal-setting and feedback procedures. Dr. Deggman and I have started our own audit to ensure that we are going to meet Personnel Indicator Number Six, which is documentation and evaluation of administrative practices, as well as an audit of personnel files, including observation reports that indicate supervision processes are occurring and effective. And we will also verify that the supervisory feedback is timely, which is contained in a post-observation report and delivered within 15 working days of the observation. It is targeted. It's connected to the evidence provided in the report, and also that it's actionable, that it's practical, and can lead to a change in practice. We will continue to update you as we prepare for the next Q-SAC review.
Biggest change is that we have to pass all components now? There's no, it's not a score?
There's five DPRs: fiscal, operations, personnel, instruction and program, and governance. You have to have that 80% of 80% in all the areas.
Okay.
So if we fail one area, we failed all areas, correct?
If you fail one area, you would be put on a district improvement plan, and then you would have to put up, for the next two years, you would be monitored.
Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Copez. Mr. Fugu has been working closely with Genesis and Mr. Brian DeLucia to prepare all data for the implementation of the Genesis Payroll and Human Resources Program. The implementation will allow for a streamlined payroll system that will create a more effective and efficient system with checks and balances. Last week, we implemented time clocks for all before, care, and after-care employees. Now the district-wide infrastructure upgrade has begun, and Mr. Fugu will detail the plan that is in place along with timelines that have been tentatively established. Mr. Fugu?
Thank you, Dr. Wanko. In regards to the Genesis Payroll and Human Resource Program, the purpose of the program is to, again, streamline the process of our payroll sheets, pretty much to eliminate the submission of payroll sheets that come in on a monthly basis that we sign off on, and move towards the technology approach to where we'll be paperless in that aspect. But the purpose of the Genesis program allows us to have the checks in place to where if a employee does not have or is not placed on a board resolution that was approved, they will not be able to see a payroll sheet. So they won't even be able to fill one out until they are approved through a board resolution and put into this system that way, which will save us a lot of concern and issues down the road. District-wide infrastructure upgrade, this has been going on for a while with the planning stages. We are now moving forward. We are in the high school right now doing a network upgrade on our entire network. We're going from one gig to three gig. That will triple our ability to reach the internet faster and have more devices online. It's going to be approximately a four- to six-month project. Once the high school's complete, we'll be going out to elementaries. Principals have been notified of the schedule. And time clocks for before and after-care employees have started this week. We're working out a few minor bugs, but it's one or two employees whose pin did not work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fugu. During this month, I reached out to St. Peter's High School to offer counseling assistance and other support if they desired in reference to the staff members' apparent suicide. As you know, earlier in the month, we unveiled the Veterans Monument in front of the flagpole, which will serve as a lasting tribute to our inductees. Additionally, I added the program paving the way for our heroes. This program affords citizens the opportunity to purchase an engraved tribute paver. On November 15th, due to severe weather conditions, I canceled all after-school programs except for after-care and called a 90-minute delayed entry the following morning. In addition to the normal notification methods, I utilized the Bayonne Public School text notification system for the first time, and it worked very well. That concludes my report. Any questions for me? Seeing none, I would like to turn the meeting back to Dr. Maida.
I'd like to make a statement about the payroll system. Hi, ladies and gentlemen. So I'd just like to make a statement as the finance chair. The new payroll system that Mr. Fugu was alluding to is a wonderful thing, and it also is as a result of the audit that I had mentioned the last previous board meeting, where we did do a voluntary audit this Board of Education and found out that, we went back as far as 2012 and found out that a certain portion of our extracurricular payroll was approved without, was paid out without board approval. And this system will allow that never to happen again. So it's very clear that this Board of Education promised we would fix that problem, and this new system is that fix. So I just wanted to make, you know, the Bayonne community aware that that will never happen again as long as the system's in place. I want to thank Mr. Fugu for all his efforts and the whole staff for getting this up and running. All right? Thank you.
If I could add additionally, after the first year, we will be saving money with this system as well.
Yep.
Dr. Maida?
Okay. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over. I believe we have a presentation from one of our directors. I recall Mr. Craig up. Floor is yours, Mr. Craig.
Good evening, trustees. I would like to just briefly provide you with a summary of a parent meeting that took place on November 1st regarding our curriculum programs and our indoor band percussion, co-curricular activity. I have with me band director Samantha Hitchell, who I'd like to brag about for a moment. Sam is not only the first woman marching band director in the history of Bayonne High School, but this year, our band finished second place in the state. We beat out 11 other schools to gain that title. We had an exceptionally good year, and we're looking forward to even a better year next year. This is a fantastic team. They're right behind us. We are missing Ms. Katrina Kleiman. Ms. Kleiman is in graduate school this evening. She's getting her master's degree in jazz performance. She's our jazz band director, our middle school jazz band director, and the co-director of our newly-added Latin jazz program. We met for about two and a half hours with parents on the first. We answered questions. It was a lively debate. When we concluded, I felt the meeting ended well. We had come to some conclusions together. We had left with a plan in place, which I enacted over the two weeks that followed the meeting. Over that two-week period, we didn't get any feedback from parents. Ms. Hitchell conducted a meeting with students, did not get any negative feedback at that time as well. And since that point, we have not received any additional negative feedback other than the feedback that initiated this presentation. So I'm going to turn it over briefly to Ms. Hitchell. I'll be at her side should I need to answer a question, and she'll provide you with a summary of what her vision is for the program, what we're going to be doing in the spring. We've passed out a schedule, so you can see that it's a vigorous schedule with full of activities in the spring. I apologize for the type. We tried to make it a little bit bigger, but we couldn't fit it on that size paper. And again, we'll both be here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Ms. Hitchell?
Good evening, board trustees. First, I'd like to start by giving a brief background about myself. I am a product of the Bayonne school system. I graduated from Bayonne High School in 2012, and I went on to graduate from the University of Delaware with a degree in music education. My vision for the instrumental music program here is to grow it to be bigger than it ever has been before. As long as I've known it, as long as I've been a part of it, it has been a smaller program with our concert band coming in at 35 students, our marching band coming in at 48 this past year, and our string ensemble coming in at 15. In a school of the size of Bayonne High School, those numbers should be astronomically higher. We should be at closer to 270 students for a flatline program, and then it should be more like 30% of our student population, which I believe to be about 2,700. It all comes from the foundation. The foundation of this program, of any band program, is concert band. That is our curricular activity at Bayonne High School. That's the class that meets every day, as well as string ensemble. With a strong foundation comes a strong house. If the foundation is not strong, then we cannot have a strong structure on top of the house, and everything will just fall apart. That is the ultimate focus for myself and for our staff going forward, is focusing on our curricular programs, those specifically being concert band, string ensemble, and our extracurricular marching band, jazz band, Latin jazz, middle school jazz, which we are adding this year, as well as musical pit orchestra involvement and getting recruitment in from the seventh and eighth graders. So we did last year, and we are doing again this year, St. Patrick's Day Parade and opening up to any band students that are in the middle schools, grammar schools, that would like to come up and join us for that, as well as we'll be having a seventh and eighth grade honors orchestra and choir concert in February. The compromise that we have come up with is to provide percussion clinics for the percussion students at Bayonne High School. These have started yesterday, and we have our first clinic tomorrow. These clinics will be taught by Mr. Eduardo Sinei, also a Bayonne alum.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Ms. Hitchell.
Yes.
Provided by whom?
Eduardo Sinei. He is a graduate of Bayonne High School as well, and was on marching band staff this year, and myself. They will be learning all about concert percussion as well as marching percussion. The difference between this and indoor percussion is that indoor percussion only provides them with the knowledge of marching percussion. Of course, the two do feed into each other a little bit, but there are massive differences in the two. If, for example, you play the marching bass drum all year round, and that's all you play, that doesn't make you a percussionist. What makes you a percussionist is being able to play the concert bass drum, concert snare drum, tenor drums, marimba, triangle, tambourine, timpani, all of the above. And that is what we are trying to provide them with, these percussion clinics. In indoor percussion, they only play their one instrument all year round. The ultimate goal is to have an instrumental music program that is large and that focuses on our curricular programs, and to get as many students involved in playing music for music's sake as we can. If you have any questions for myself or Mr. Craig? Thank you.
I have a couple. I find your choice of words interesting, that you're not a true percussionist if you don't play a variety of percussion instruments. You know, that's like saying that, you know, if I play the flute and I don't play the clarinet and I don't play all the woodwind instruments, I'm not a musician. So I find that a little bit of a stretch. I think that you can master a snare drum, you know, or a timpani or anything of that nature and still be a percussionist. That's just my personal opinion from my previous band experience. So I do have a couple of questions. So the percussion clinic, so why did you choose to end the indoor percussion program?
The indoor percussion program, we felt was taking away from all of our other activities as the year progressed towards the spring season. Fall is still with marching band, and then as soon as the spring season hit, it became the same about indoor. It didn't provide students with all of the well-rounded education that I felt that they should be getting, and I felt it singled out a small group of students when we could be reaching all students. So just like we're starting percussion clinics now, we'll be starting marching band clinics for everyone starting in January, just to provide as much as we can for everybody. Indoor percussion only serves about 15 to 20 kids that decide to sign up, and we're trying to reach many more than that.
So you felt like the indoor, would you say that the percussionists were advanced?
Yes.
All right. And do you think they're more advanced than the rest of the band?
Yes.
So if I'm the manager, if I'm a coach of a football team, and my running backs are not as good as my linemen, do I trade my linemen, or do I upgrade my running backs? So I guess my question is, why would we dismantle the indoor percussion program because they're doing well and they're successful?
We are not trying to replace our linemen. I think that was the analogy we were going for. We're trying to keep them up and get everybody up and involved. That's why we're having the percussion clinics, to provide them with as much education as possible, in a way that feeds them information for every instrument that they will need to know as a percussionist in order to get into college or to go on into a career. We are also bringing the other students up by starting marching band five or six months earlier than typical for marching bands, as well as involving in seventh and eighth grade students. So trying to keep them where they're at and improving from where they are in a different capacity than they're used to, and bringing everybody up at the same time.
You did mention, Mr. Craig did mention, that the marching band had a phenomenal season, state champs, first place out of 11 schools that competed in that division. Your percussion, could you tell us about their competitions? How many schools they, how many competitions they were in? How many schools they competed against, and how did they fare?
Sure. So throughout the marching band season as well, we compete against every Saturday about anywhere between three to five schools a weekend. The same goes for indoor percussion. They did last year six competitions, and at all, they had placed last, or I believe once they placed second to last. So they were continuously coming in last this past year.
Want to ask?
Mm-hmm.
Why do you think they were coming in to last or second to last?
The season started later than it should have. I believe they started in January. It was run by, not me, it was run by another teacher that had come in to do the program. And I believe that that happened because there was a lack of funding for that activity because we are trying to service everybody, as well as a lack of space in gyms because sports teams were taking over for their practices. There were a lot of factors that played in.
So basically, we're saying we're not providing the facility nor the personnel to really enhance this program?
Trustee Finney, if you would. George Lavelle worked with the indoor percussion program last year. He may be better suited to answer that question from a firsthand perspective, if you would indulge us? Yeah, George is right here. He'll gladly answer that question while he feels we did not do as well last year. So if you'd like.
The other question I have besides, before we, Ms. Lavelle, this board obviously pays attention to what parents say to us, to what students say to us. Can you say what is the major problem this year that didn't exist last year? Why are we being presented with this problem last year? Why aren't we continuing the program we had last year?
When Mr. Good was the band director, Mr. Good's primary instrument is percussion. And he had a passion for percussion, began the indoor percussion program, and that was something he was very passionate about. He felt it would be an excellent tool for recruiting to Bayonne High School. And it did work. We did recruit percussionists. There were some other factors that affected our recruitment, and Mr. Good left the district. He left the district and went to Old Bridge. After he left, we maintained the marching band and the program for the year he left as a transition year. Samantha and I sit, just like I sit with all my programs, and I do a program review. We look at the students, we look at their, where they are, their level of competency, where we want to go with the program, and we discuss it. We discuss it periodically throughout the year. Where, what's next? What are we doing? Where are we strong? Where are we weak? What should we really be focusing on? What can we do for recruitment? We're always working that way. So her vision was one of, look, our concert band is weak, and our concert band feeds all of our other programs. Our concert band feeds our marching band, our concert band feeds our jazz band, our concert band feeds all of our programs. And it encompasses the most of our students. The majority of our students are in concert band. Everything feeds out from there. So yes, our percussion program's great. Our percussionists are great. We also have other students who play other instruments who are equally as great. We want them to play well together. What is curricularly sound for us is to focus on our curricular courses, which is our concert band, our jazz band, and the programs, the co-curricular programs that come from our curriculum. Indoor percussion, while a great program, and we do not want to disappoint anyone, was not meeting the needs of what we need for all of our students. We were having a, it was a good program, a successful program, but we need those percussionists to play as part of the concert band. And one thing, Trustee Munoz, you mentioned, and I tend to agree with you because I don't know as much about percussion as maybe you do or the percussionists that are here, but I will say this: yes, there's something to be said for that indoor, to be a master of that particular, the snare drum over it may be. But we also have to be concerned with the college and career readiness of our students. So when we get there, I have to look and say, well, curricular-wise, what are we doing? Like, what jobs are they going to be able to get? What are their college auditions going to be like? So then I turn to my experts, and I talk to the people who, Eduardo, who just came out of school with his degree in music education as a percussionist. I said, Eduardo, what do they need? And he said, Tim, this is it. You've got to be a very versatile percussionist. Indoor percussion is great. It's a practice, but it's not going to get you ready for your auditions. And we mentioned that to parents at that meeting, which is why we compromised, I apologize, why we compromised to say Eduardo Sinei. He's right here, young man's right here. Yeah.
Is he a member of the Bayonne? Is he a certified teacher? Is he a member of staff?
He has finished his degree. He is a volunteer at this point, but I hope to, if the opportunity arises, I would love to hire him next year.
So we'll get back to the volunteers. I have a question about that, about volunteers, about the definition of volunteers versus paid staff. But I, so I do have a question about that. But let me get back to something that you had mentioned. So when did you decide that you weren't going to have an indoor percussion program? Because you just made a reference to, we used this as a transition year last year, that Ms. Hitchell did not feel that that was the direction she wanted to bring the program.
Right.
So in my mind, hearing that, and I think the other trustees, I don't know if you agree with me, you had made this decision last year, that this will be the last year?
No, 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 that's not the impression. We meet periodically. Was it discussed last year? Absolutely. Of course it did.
Okay, so beginning this year, was it decided?
No, we were probably, we were probably on the fence with it, yeah.
Oh, when?
So when did we decide? Was it the day?
I don't remember the exact date. We were on the fence with it.
I'm sorry.
No, that's it. So I guess my question is, I feel like this decision was made a while ago, and when were the students notified? Because I think that one of the outcry that I saw, I mean, I saw a lot of kids get up at the board meeting and very impassioned about their program, which I commend them for. Because there are many students who, you know, some of them that don't care about things, and they actually care about this. So those kids should be commended for it, you know, to get up and speak for what they believe in. But that being said, it seemed like this kind of caught them off guard, and that they, there was this beautiful big poster board in the band room and had all the programs on it, and then they came in one day and the indoor percussion sign was missing. So, you know, like that, that So, you know, like that, that part of the poster that was there, I guess all the programs are there, concert, jazz, you know, and that indoor percussion was taken off.
I'm sorry, trustee, that big poster, indoor percussion's still there.
Okay, is it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Right, all right. I was told by a student that it was missing.
That's incorrect.
But anyway, that's fine, that's fine. I don't want to go here and say who said. But my question is, when did they know? Because I think one of the arguments they have is that they weren't given ample notification. They thought, coming into the school year, they were going to have their group and now it's gone.
Okay. You want to answer that?
Yeah. Oh, pardon, pardon. As the marching band season went on, I began to notice, in the beginning, everybody felt really strong about, okay, as a team, we are working as a marching band to get this result, which was to come first, second, or third in the state. As we became closer to reaching that goal, I began to get the question, oh, this is great, but when does indoor start? Are we going to have our indoor? When does indoor start? When does indoor start? And the percussion started to, at competitions as well, win a caption award. The judges give out specific awards for best music performance, visual, overall effect, percussion, sometimes color guard. And the percussionists were winning that award. As they were winning that, they started to begin asking about indoor percussion. I told them the honest truth, which was, I'm really not sure what we're doing this year. Mr. Craig and I are still discussing it and trying to decide what's best for the whole program. We became second in the state. We walked off the field and half the marching band was like enthralled, crying, so excited. And the other half, I began hearing like, oh, well, maybe now we'll have indoor. It's taking away from the programs that are supposed to be the top elite, like, things. It's starting to take away from those things because it's becoming the only focus. We're not viewing concert band the way we should, or marching band the way we should, or jazz band the way we should, or any of our other programs that should be the top.
All of that's really good. You just avoided the question. When did you notify anybody?
The last week of marching band was when they began to get notified.
Now, when did you notify anybody? When did you send a letter, call a meeting, say, hi, we need to discuss this, this is what's happening? Because we took an awful lot of garbage, including being told that we cut their funding. So you created an awful lot of problems. So when did you do what you were supposed to do?
We let a parent know the last week of marching band.
A parent?
We were receiving emails about indoor percussion.
Another one you haven't done.
We have done it. I had a meeting with the students and parents.
Trustee Ryan.
Step away for one sec.
Trustee Ryan.
This November?
November, November 1st, rather, yes.
We have to take a deep breath here. What I see as a problem is basically that this group does want to have a percussion competition group. I understand that. I also understand you guys are looking for the good of the entire program. Now, I know you did have a meeting and according to the meeting, well, Dr. Wankel said he didn't get any feedback after that for...
Well, at the meeting, at the board meeting, everyone remembers, we had an outcry. And we said we had to go through policy, procedure, and steps. And I said I'd be happy to meet with everyone after Mr. Craig meets first because we have to follow our procedure. Mr. Craig met with the parents, I think the following day or the day after that. And the parent who came to the podium said, I know I'm going to need the meeting with you. I think you all remember that. And I said, I will keep the time slot open. I did not hear anything for two weeks. Two weeks. My assumption would be, the meeting went well, because that's a report I received from Mr. Craig. The meeting went well. Everyone was happy. Two weeks, I did not hear a word. Then, after two weeks, we got an email about percussion again, and that's what prompted this presentation today.
With all due respect, this was caused not two weeks ago, not last meeting, but prior to that. The only right that exists in this district is the right of these students to a thorough and efficient education. Concurrent with that, the parents need to know what's going on with their children. They have, this district has an obligation, a duty, to inform the parents. These children were asking about a program that had been here, that several of them had been recruited by, recruited for. Now, all of a sudden, it just goes away. And as you witnessed, one of the things they were told was that the board and you did not fund the program. So, the problem didn't occur over these last two weeks. The problem occurred previous to that. And when we asked direct questions about when actions were taken, we're told, I don't know, I don't remember, and we're given a winding answer.
I never said it happened in the past two weeks. I said I did not hear from anyone.
I'm not arguing with that point. I am not arguing with that.
After the meeting that was held.
I agree with you. And those parents are trying to digest things because they're not getting information that they believe quickly enough or accurately enough. And it's taking them time to digest it. The fact that it took two weeks for this to bubble up doesn't make me feel good.
Well, the other thing also is, your point is very well taken, Dr. Wankel, because one does not hear, one assumes there's tacit approval. You did not hear anything and you came to the assumption that the parents were happy with this movement.
In addition, I met with Mr. Craig after the meeting and he told me the meeting went well. So it's not just that I sat back and didn't hear anything, I heard a report from the director as well.
So, let me ask you a question specifically. What made you think the meeting went well?
While we left the meeting, we came to a conclusion, about two and a half hours into the meeting, we said, okay, guys, we got to start to wrap this up. We have to come to a conclusion. What can we do? What are we doing? And the agreement was that we were going with what Ms. Hitchell said with concert band. I specifically addressed the percussion needs by saying, we would run the percussion clinics, we would have two percussion instructors, we would start the clinics right away, we would have that in place because one of the parents had expressed the need that their daughter was not getting what she needed to be prepared for college. That's where the clinic came in. That is what I specifically answered and specifically put in place. It is on our calendar now.
And I'm, I'm just trying to understand this, right?
Can I just finish this question, please?
Yes, please, no, I apologize.
Uh, percussion clinic. What is involved in a percussion clinic? Do these students enter into any competitions? When you say percussion clinic, it seems to be a very broad term to me. Other than like the students practicing, what else is involved in the percussion clinic?
Well, it's definitely not a competitive group. I mean, it's closely...
You kind of jam every afternoon.
Well, that's certainly not what they do. Would you like to speak to the gentleman who's teaching the class?
Well, when you say teaching in class, is it an after-school, is it an extracurricular?
It's an after-school class.
All right. So it's...
It's a co-curricular class, absolutely. It's not extra.
And under whose budget is it? Is it the music department or the athletic department?
Mr. Sine.
Who pays for it?
Mr. Sine at the meeting with the parents volunteered to run those clinics. He is doing it free, of no charge.
So we have percussion clinics run by volunteers and there are no competitions?
No. Marching band is our, that's our A-game. Marching band, we go out and we compete with every year. That is where our competition now makes its difference.
And Mr. Craig, I understand that. Marching band, there's a season for marching band.
Right.
To my understanding, the season is done.
It is.
So, what are we providing for these extra percussionists between the marching band season and once they pick up again, I think I can play...
What are we providing? Okay, we're providing...
Athletic.
No. You're providing concert band, you're providing jazz band, you're providing Latin jazz band, you're providing those things, which do compete. But competition is not and never will be my goal for this program. My goal is to get them ready for college, to get them ready for their careers, and to pass them on. A trophy doesn't mean anything. A scholarship means something.
Absolutely, yeah. Mr. Craig, you...
Eva, I know that, I know that.
The thing is this, the biggest problem, the biggest debacle that this board is contending with is it seems to us, or it was presented to us, that the rug was pulled out from under these kids who thought they were going to have an indoor percussion. Did you have an indoor percussion plan last year?
No. Oh, I'm sorry. Did I have a plan to run the program last year?
Yeah, well, I know that you had somebody running it.
Yes, we determined at a parent meeting, when we knew that Tony had left the district, that would be run, we would be maintaining the indoor percussion program last year. Yes, we had a plan.
So, what you're telling me is last year...
Mm-hmm, we had a plan.
We did not have a BB-OED employee who's a volunteer.
No. Michael Fmento ran it last year, along with George. And...
So what happened between last year and this year?
What happened between last year and this year is exactly what our band directors' vision for the program is and what we feel.
The band director's vision.
Correct. Correct.
If I can, if I can...
She's the banter.
Hey, guys, if I can...
Well, that's what...
All right, all right.
I want to make, I'm going to give you one quick story.
I don't understand.
And it has nothing to do that's going to help this situation, but I can go back to an athletic event. And we used to have a golf team. And one season, they decided, well, we're going to make some cuts. Well, they cut the golf team. Now, once again, sort of like percussion, it's an extracurricular activity. Now, should we have percussion? Maybe so. I would love, should we have had a golf team? Yes, we should have. But things happen.
That's true.
What I'm saying is, we brought these people here to discuss this, and I think what we're going to have to do is maybe meet inside, you know, get another administrative meeting and see if there's something else we can correct. And plus, I don't know if there's anything that needs to be corrected because in one way, I'm hearing that the meeting went well, maybe at the work, maybe at the open public meeting, we won't hear that. But if that's the case, then I think we would go on and take another look and see what we could do to make things a little better or not better. But I think at this point, what I'm hearing from Mr. Craig and from Ms. Hitchell, that, you know, they're here with a plan, with what they think is the right way to go. Now, whether that's agreed upon or that could be changed, that might be another story. But to sit here and to start attacking, I don't think that is a proper way for us to be going at this moment.
President Broderick, this is not an attack, but you said things were going well. What do you mean by things are going well? I'm not understanding things are going, I'm sorry.
Well, we decided that they were going to have a meeting.
Exactly what I was...
They had a meeting. Dr. Wankel made a specific motion that, please let me know if it doesn't go well. Well, two weeks went by and no one said, now, I know, you know, people are saying, well, it was building up, but if I had a meeting that didn't go well on Tuesday, I probably would have let somebody know right away on Wednesday that, well, we didn't get what we wanted.
President Broderick, with all due respect, whether it was two weeks or three weeks, we did receive a follow-up email from a concerned parent, actually a few emails, and I'm sure they're operable, that said that it did not go well. And that's why we are here now.
Okay. And that's why I think at this point, for us to continue in this matter isn't going to be productive at all. I think, I think it'd be better for us to look at this, discuss it.
I was asking questions.
Oh, I know.
I mean, I...
You're always a gentleman.
I mean, I'm just, and again, please, this is not an attack on you, Mr. Craig or Ms. Hitchell.
I don't do this as an attack.
All right, I am, that's not my intention.
We know when we're attacked.
Right, right, right. My intention is, I just like to get some answers and, like, again, with, and I guess this is the president's nice way of saying, I can't ask any more questions. But maybe you could email me and answer the question about, you could see how it could be very, it could be misconstrued, that Ms. Hitchell on one hand is saying the percussionists are way up here and the concert band is down here, but then now...
I'm sorry, could I just speak to that for one second? And I did think about this.
Yeah.
We did spend the last six years in the spring focusing a lot, a great deal of effort on our percussion program in the spring. At this parent meeting, there were parents there who said, they're percussion parents and they expressed their concerns, and we tried to really come up with a compromise. There were equal part parents there who were saying, my son plays the flute and haven't really been given any attention for the last six years, so it's either concert band and nothing else really co-curricular. So, you do have those parents too. They're just not here. So they came to the meeting and they settled up with us in the meeting and they said, listen, you know, we understand, thank you, thank you, we're going to get a little, we're going to put a little emphasis toward the concert band. So those parents exist as well. You know, we do try to come up with a compromise. We're not trying to just shut this down and hurt people's feelings and hurt kids. This is not what this group of human beings does. This is not what I do. I mean, we look at programs every day and we make clear, educated decisions on what we're going to do, but they're curricular decisions. They're based on what we're teaching in our classes, the ability levels of our kids, and I rely on those experts. When I go to my music faculty, I appointed Sam into that position and asked her to be that and passed her along to the superintendent and to the board, and she's in that position. I asked her to do that because I believe in her abilities, just like everyone who's here. And I also went further and called other programs. I called the Dad's Hargles, I mean, I called other schools and said, guys, what do I do? I called Meg Zavouas, who I trust more than anything in the world because Meg is the consummate professional. And I said, Meg, you did marching band, you did everything that could be done musically. What would you do in this situation? She said, Tim, there's no question, it's concert band. It's concert band. That's what you do. That's how you build the program. So no one's looking to hurt. Eventually, the transition's going to have to be made. It stayed last year. We're just trying to transition back to concert band. And I think if you look at that schedule, you will see a schedule that is incredibly vigorous. And I understand, you know what, trustee Vindery, I would gladly email you a breakdown of what the clinic is so that you have that information, you can make an informed decision. I'll answer any question if anyone wants to email me, take a phone call, whatever's necessary, I will do that. None of these decisions are easy, none of them come without complications, none of them come without hurt feelings. I met with these students for two and a half hours. Some of them came to my office. I sat down and spoke to them. I don't want to see anyone hurt. I want to see the program thrive. But if we have the challenges of recruitment, to get kids to come to Bayonne High School, I can't do it just with percussion. I've got to be able to do it with jazz and Latin jazz. I've got to be able to do it with a middle school jazz program. I've got to be able to do it with my concert band because I've got to be able to say to those string players and those horn players, I've got a place for you. It's not just percussion. And I know that's not the easiest answer for moms and dads, and I said to them at the meeting, they're great people, they're advocates for their kids, their passion is placed right where it should be. They are not my enemy, I will never look at them that way. They are good people who want the best for their children, and their children are fantastic. But at some point, the educators have to make those decisions because we know what's But at some point, the educators have to make those decisions because we know what's best for their training, for what comes next in their lives. And that's all I want to say. And again, I'll gladly answer any questions. I'll gladly answer any emails. I thank you, obviously, for your attention and your time, as does Ms. Hinchell, and on behalf of the staff, thank you. We always feel supported. In terms of a budget, we've always been supported. I have said that in writing. I have said that multiple times. Would I always want more money? Absolutely. I met with Dr. Wanko. I met with Dr. Pearson. I said, Dr. Pearson, if I need more money for band, absolutely tell me what you need, we'll work it out. We made a plan going forth to next year. I spoke to Dr. Wanko and I said, guys, in about 20 years, we haven't changed our stipends. We really need to add some stipends. Dr. Wanko said, write me a brief, I will get right on it. That's, that's what we're doing. We're being proactive. So I always, as always, thank you for your suggestions, your input, your courtesy. And to that end, we'll step away and let you continue your meeting.
No, I have one more question.
First thing.
Tim, you know me.
No problem.
When this decision was made not to continue really with an indoor percussion, did you discuss this with the superintendent of curriculum?
Prior to making the decision?
Yes.
We have monthly Marshall meetings, and in the monthly Marshall meetings, we do talk about things like that. Can I specifically recall?
Was the price of this?
Oh, he knew. With the Dr. Dagnan.
He knew that the indoor percussion was going to be disbanded.
Oh, no, no. No, I never said to Dr. Dagnan, we're disbanding the indoor percussion, but we do talk about the programs and what's happening with the programs and stuff. I advised him after, that we were having a parent meeting and advised him of the outcome of the parent meeting. Yes, I did. Yeah, but beforehand.
And the second question is, can, can we hear from Ms. Lavelle?
Absolutely. George, would you mind? I think many of you already know, George, he's a fixture in the band community in Bayonne and elsewhere. George, George is a scholar and a gentleman.
Good evening, trustees and Superintendent Wanko. You know, I know the question came up, what happened last year? You know, we got brought into this in January. Season starts in February, so we were behind the eight ball. We didn't have facilities. That was part of it. We struggled with facilities. We need a full-sized gym. We were fighting even on a day of a competition, we needed three hours' practice. The softball team got priority and we had two hours' practice. At the end of the season, we actually were like, we needed another week. Well, we lost that with all those practices. So that's really what happened, the transition and the director and the staff being all new to all of that. We tried our best, the kids were great, and we just were behind the eight ball. You said, what changed? I will tell you what changed. The marching band program got really good, and that's part of the problem. When Sam told me, she only had 35 people in the concert band, I said, wow, 43, 50, 70 kids? That's not a lot. I've been doing this 36 years. The priority of a music program has always been the marching band because of the football game. And that's why it's in the athletic budget, just so you know, because I was here in 1983 when that all started.
It's not anymore.
Okay, well, I'm glad you did, but that's, that's where it really started. But then the concert band is where everybody gets to see. You know, the marching band goes in competition and they do the football games, and everybody goes to football games, but the concert band performs and people get to see that. Then the jazz band, concert band, brass ensemble, wind ensemble, all started. I've never been part of a program that the percussion ensemble was the priority. And that was done because of the previous vision of the band director. Okay? There are programs out there that do it just to keep them busy. The program, I, I think that we should be focusing, we finished second this year, we had a two-year plan with the marching band, we can win next year. We start marching band in January. February, we start earlier. That will help us. But if we have a percussion ensemble, we're going to miss some of those kids. Where's our priority? Where's our focus? Now, in school, they need to focus on the concert band. You know, I, it was very frustrating last year to be part of the percussion ensemble that we were behind the eight ball, and I felt bad for the kids because the kids are great. Kids are great in Bayonne High School. No matter what they do, whether it's concert band, marching band, percussion ensemble, jazz band, whatever, they are wonderful kids. And whatever they do, we'll be successful. So how we got here, I'm, I'm, I got to tell you, I'm, I'm really mad how we got here. We finished in second place. They worked hard in 10 weeks. We, we could have won, almost won. Next year, we, we will win, but here we are, second place, walking out of stands, and this issue became the issue. Where's the celebration? This happened at the end of percussion ensemble last year where the season ended and the parents were mad because they couldn't do certain things and blah, 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 and it took away from that moment. Those kids should be, there should be a banner, should be a celebration, and we're not celebrating because two days later, here's the board meeting, and I watch on YouTube, so I kind of see how that works. And then two days after that, we have a, a big meeting going on and no one's going, hey, we finished in second place. We finished in second place. We have great kids. How do we, how do we go? What's the vision to go forward? Everybody wants to win, and we need to build the, the concert band up because you're not going to get, if you don't build the concert band up, there's not going to be enough kids in marching band. This marching band program should be a group five, 150 kids.
So, George, question. So you're saying that if they do indoor percussion, they can't participate in concert band?
No, I'm not saying that, but the, the resources, you see the schedule right here. They have to study too, right? March, percussion ensemble's three days a week. How are they going to do all that? How could they do other multiple things and still keep their grades up? I have kids at home in a marching band and jazz band, and I got to worry about that too. So it's tough. The vision that we have, the vision of the powers that be of the music department want to go this route. Okay? I think if, if we don't build the concert band up, we'll be a group one, group two every year. It's been that way for 19, since 1983, and it's, it's time that we change that. We finished in second, let's take that success and keep pushing it to where we have 120 kids, and then you can go back to having a percussion ensemble because you have 200 kids in the program and you're not taking the same kid to go jazz band, concert band, marching band, percussion ensemble. You know what I'm saying? Like, you could spread it out there. We're just really thin, when you think about it. 35 in the concert band, 48 in the marching band? That's tough.
Is there a way to combine them?
No. No.
Ms. Lavelle, this is definitely not about the kids, and they shouldn't, they should be front and center, but this is actually mostly about the adults who didn't keep the parents looped in. If you knew, if you were going to discuss your vision and all the things you did, that should have been done and wrapped up in June. Letter should have been sent out to the parents saying, we are now changing the program and for these reasons. We will now have a plan and we're going to have a meeting to discuss this. And that goal would have been settled in September. Instead, because people don't do their jobs, because they don't keep the, show the parents the proper respect that a parent should have, because parents who are experts in their own children, that's why we're here.
I think that's something that maybe we have to decide, and we have to come up with a policy. I don't think it's, I don't think it's Ms. Lavelle's job to.
So, thank you very much. Thank you for listening and giving me the time.
Thank you, Ms. Lavelle. Thank you.
Dr. Wanko, are those three people going to be available for the public meeting?
That is the plan.
That's the plan.
That's the plan.
That's the plan. Thank you.
They will tell.
I cannot.
Please double check. All right. Moving along to our regular business, I'll start with the agenda. I'll start with approval of minutes and acceptance of communications. I'd like to make a point though, only because of some of the conversation I heard. Maybe this will help, maybe it won't, but I'm going to ask the board, if you go back to your training. Your board members are getting individual emails from the public. I'm going to ask you to please forward that to the superintendent. Please forward that to the board secretary. That's the only other way the rest of the board members are going to know about individual emails between parents or whatever and board members. If we don't, if the super doesn't get it and I don't get it, we have no way of knowing if the other trustees get it. So I just point that out there and I solve a lot of your problems in the future. Going back to communications, your last communication, I just got that this afternoon, Joe Wyatt. And I also included the package. So you'll see the letter, you'll see his package. Now, obviously, if he does show up tonight to ask you, you haven't had time to review it, but I just pointed out that we get, we did get it at about 1:30 this afternoon. I'm, I'm going to ask that, we don't spend much time on it since you guys haven't seen it. You get a chance to read it, you'll understand what he's talking about. I'll explain to him that he's not going to get an answer on this tonight because you guys just got it. You didn't have a chance to read it. It's 34 pages long.
Oh.
And I don't expect you to read it right now. The super read it, but I gave it to him.
He's a speed reader. You're a speed reader, right?
Can I have a move in a second? Two volunteers, a move in a second on communications.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Trustee Valado, thank you. And trustee Vindery, thank you. Moving ahead, curriculum committee met. I'm just going to point out the resolutions that we need to go over. Resolution A10 was staff to curriculum writing. Since the curriculum meeting, there's been an update. Once again, it's only the bold names on the resolutions that are being added. And along with A11, staff to academic reading and math support. It's different from the committee meeting, it's just the bold names that have been added. And then there's an addition, A20, which we'd like to add to the agenda. On second thought, when we were looking at our December meeting, which was Thursday, December 20th, it's really putting us close to the end of the school year, and the suggestion that we came up is that we move our public meeting to Tuesday, December 18th, same time. So unless the board has a problem with that, I'm going to add A20 to our agenda. And that concludes curriculum's agenda.
Check my calendar.
If there's no questions, I'll move on to.
I have a quick question, please.
Sure, go ahead.
Looking at the curriculum, a curricula.
A10, curriculum writing.
Yeah, yeah. I was posed with a question today. Do we have a, a curriculum writing group for special needs?
Actually, every department has curriculum writing. That's a living document, the curriculum. In fact, it's funny you should bring that up because Mr. Broderick just contacted me three days ago, I believe, about bringing back a program we used to have in the special needs department where we paired our students with some custodians, half-day.
Yes.
And we're looking at putting that back in right now. We have, we're working on that curriculum at this time.
Mr. Broderick mentioned that to me. I was just, I'm, I'm kind of just concerned that there's not, we do differentiate curriculum for special needs children, do we not?
Yes, we do, as we do for every child.
So in every department, my point is this. Let's just say we're doing a, say, a music curriculum in a school that houses an autistic program. And we want to develop a curriculum that, that focuses on kids who are on the spectrum. Who would be involved in writing that curriculum? Certainly, you would definitely need somebody who has music education in, in his or her background, but you would have to combine that with somebody who has special needs background.
Correct.
I'm not, I'm concerned that the curriculum writing here, and it was just brought to my attention by someone today, that we don't, we don't really have a specific special needs curricular, curriculum writing group that works with social studies, that works with language arts. I think there has to be a cooperative effort between the two. However, I'm not seeing this in our curriculum writing, and I really think that's necessary, that there's a cooperative effort between our language arts specialists, our music specialists, our math specialists, that works together with someone who has specialized training in special needs.
So with the curriculum writing, with the new plans, all the students, all students be to meet New Jersey student learning standards for that grade level and content within the, the, the modification section? It's not just for special education. In there is also a section, trustee Vindery, for GNT, 504, DLL, and at-risk, so built into the curriculum.
That's here, Dr. Dagnan?
No, no, that's in the curriculum document. The curriculum writers put that in our curriculum document. Now, I worked with the directors and they created the curriculum document, but it's graded by social studies, algebra one in the high school, and there's the, our curriculum documents, again, the resources are built in and accommodations are built in. Now, in the lesson plans, they differentiate by teacher what they need to do to meet the New Jersey student learning standards. That's a wonderful idea. If there is somebody that's in special ed qualified that wants to join the curriculum writing team, we can offer that. That's a really great, wonderful idea, and I have no problem doing that.
I thought that was in place though. That's why I meant, that's why I was asking the question, because look, it was brought to my attention today.
But there's not a specific special ed curriculum. There's math curriculum with special ed accommodations built in, infused into the curriculum.
So we don't really make a differentiation between special needs kids.
Because they have to meet the standard for that grade level and then in the curriculum document, they're building.
That's why the IEP, I think, would be the important matter. So that teacher's going to receive the IEP from, yeah, the child study team, they have to adjust to that. So what then would take into consideration?
So, in other words, everyone should be learning the same thing and then the IEP dictates the modifications that are made to, to, you know, to disseminate the curriculum, you know? But everyone should have the same curriculum, technically.
I understand what. No, the curriculum doesn't change. I, I got that, Chris, but what I'm not seeing here is, I really do think that on curricula, curricula teams, whether it be music, math, that we really, we really need to include someone who has a special needs certification. We all know, especially if students are on the spectrum, with their auditory and even with their visual, it's very heightened. You have somebody who is not trained in special needs, writing a curriculum, who does not have a special needs background, how can he or she write or help write a curriculum that addresses special needs children if they're not trained to know that they, with auditory stimulus or visual, I, I, I just.
I think what, what President Broderick was saying, the curriculum has to meet the standards of all students at a grade level. We build in the modifications into the curriculum document, and then we further drill down to what you're saying in the lesson plan, whether it's the inclusion teacher, the resource teacher, the self-contained teacher by student, what they need based on what you're discussing, the combination. Now, that's what, but you're right. If you want in mathematics, say algebra, a specialist from the special ed, like a special ed to join the curriculum ranking, I'm, I'll open that. I'd like, I would, based on that, I would also open up to a bilingual or ar- bilingual or, yeah, wonderful idea.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I just think we have to expand this a little bit more.
Good suggestion, absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, moving ahead to finance, the finance agenda. I'll go over the resolutions that weren't done at the meeting, B2. You've all received your reports, so that could be signed this evening. And also our claims and account, that's in your package, is the updated claims and account. We'll get that signed tonight. Next up, I'll ask you to turn to B6, and I handed out background information for the resolution. I know we tabled this last month. I've included Matt's email to me that the business is registered with the state, and I included all the bid documents that were submitted the day that we did the bid. Remind the board that we have 60 days to act on a bid, so I've got a resolution, bid of telecommunications in front of you. Just have to tell me what we want to do.
This is the only bid we received, correct?
Yes, we had one bidder that day.
Have you only get one bid for?
We, we posted and advertised, and that's the only document that showed up the day of the bids.
Maybe it's just bad timing.
I'm sorry?
Bad timing.
Bad timing, what?
When we put out the bid, there just not enough people knew about it.
Well, I mean, it gets.
Maybe we should rebid it.
It's typically not a really widely contested. I mean, I might be two.
That's what I'm surprised, it's all I want.
You've got to remember, there is the issue of, you know, getting to Bayonne, that's discussed quite often.
Mr. Rode, how, how many years has this person, this company been doing this for us? How many years?
Well, it was.
I know when I was here, three years ago.
2012.
12.
But you may have been.
So we're saying over 12 years, we have not, over 12 years.
2012.
I'm sorry, 2012.
I don't know if you was in that prior or not.
Oh, at least 2012.
I'm not certain. 2012 over there.
Minimum six years.
So no one else has bidded, other than like two or three other people? On this.
Put myself to the attorneys on this.
Perhaps you should say this from back.
He's the only bidder as well. If I remember going back to when I was writing this, Spat, he was the only bidder, I believe, in 2012.
I mean, if we, if we put it out to bid, I could definitely reach out to all the people I met at the school board convention that would be interested in it that didn't know met at the school board convention that would be interested in it, that didn't know about it.
Well, how would they not know about it? That's what I'm not understanding, then. How would they not know that?
One thing I want to point out, Mr. Finance Chair, is that we do have 60 days to act on a bid, and we're already, since we tabled it last month, we're already past, we're almost at that threshold. If we allow this to go another month, we're going to miss that. Am I correct on that?
Yes, but I'd like to back up one second and make a correction. You know, when we go out to bid, you know, we don't just put it in the community news. We go out to bid, it's online, it's picked up by different services, it's in the newspapers. So it's not like we just, you know, we don't go out there and get as many people as you can. For example, what we did yesterday, you'll see the pool coming up, but we also did lentil repair. It's the same process we did for telecommunications. I think I had nine bidders for lentil and masonry repair. The process is no different for that than it was for telecommunications.
So what have we done in the last 30 days, Mr. Trustee Munoz?
We have, actually, well, the finance...
Did we put it out again?
We did not put it out again because we still have an existing bid, and the board did not vote this bid down. What we did was, we agreed to table it until next month, until we had opportunity to discuss it. We did discuss it in finance, and I asked for the supporting documentation. Mr. Maida gave it to me. I wanted the entire bid. I want to see who the owner was. I want to see everything that was outlined in their bid, all their paperwork, and that's what you have in front of you.
I don't have it in front of me.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's what I just handed...
It's a supplemental.
It's a supplemental?
Yeah, I'll give you another one.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Okay, got it, okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Somebody need one?
Yeah, I mean, we could, you know, we could discuss this, you know, or...
All right, maybe for inside again.
Well, no. It's not an inside matter.
Okay, it's not an inside matter, Dr. Munoz?
I guess, the chairman...
I think you should explain to the board or answer the board's question.
Are you all okay with it?
What is the grounds to not accept?
Yeah, well...
That would be enclosed.
Right, all right, so...
So if that's the question, and that's what's being asked now, that's enclosed. That is a legal issue.
Yeah. So is that the question that's being asked of our attorneys? If not, we have to finish this out here instead of...
I'd like to, just like I said, I'd like a chairperson of finance, too. If he's... I keep getting you on the spot, I know.
I love it. You know, you don't want me to ask questions. It's a mess, you know? You've got to keep your mind, you're killing it. Okay, so here's, here's what I would say as a chairperson of finance. We did meet, we did not have all the trustees there, but I was there as well as President Broderick and the finance team. We did conclude this was the only bidder. There's no guarantee that if we let this bid election go out again, that we would receive an additional bidder. We might put it out and get the same person over and over. This person does have a longstanding relationship with the bail board of education, albeit before we got here. It is there now and still exists. If you have any reservations as to why we would not, I think, on the advice of legal counsel, that would be inside, correct?
Yes.
Okay. But as far as, from a finance perspective, after discussing it with our finance team and discussing it with Secretary Maida, it was determined that we should go ahead and put it on the agenda because we do not have any additional bidder at this time.
Well, let it go on, Mr. Munoz, that you're recommending that we do this, and I will concur.
Right, right.
On your recommendation.
Right, right. What I'm saying is, again, it was recommended we bring it to agenda. Every trustee has their own vote here, okay? So I am not recommending this vendor. I'm suggesting that we decided in finance to bring it to the entire board. Now, what you guys decide to do as a whole, what we decide to do as a whole, it's completely a different thing. I am not recommending this vendor. I do not know who this vendor is. Do you understand? I mean, there's a distinction. We just agreed to bring it to the meeting. We're not endorsing.
Okay.
Right?
Thank you.
All right.
So I guess we'll bring this inside. Moving along, I'll ask you to go to B-8. Entering an agreement with BPD Accounting and Consulting. $75 per hour, not to exceed $30,000. This is new, you haven't seen this. Any questions?
Yeah, I'm just going to be that person tonight, Dr. Munoz. What is...
This is superintendent.
Financial temperature.
You can help me, this is the renewal...
What do we mean by finance, accountant, what do we mean by financial temperature? I'm not, I don't know what this means, so I'm having a hard time.
That was used originally when Dr. Wanko came on board.
I'm talking specifically about B-A. What does that mean?
Yeah, B-A.
B-A, resolution?
Yes, and I'm speaking on B-A.
Okay.
It was brought, was brought, was consulted, and he's been here quite often and helped us. The original verbiage probably should have been, you know, modified because now he's assisting with the transition over to Genesis.
Maybe I can explain. This is a resolution that was done previous. The amount has been reached on that resolution, so now we have to do a new resolution to extend the amount of money. So this isn't, this is a new resolution in front of you, but it was done...
A year back.
A year back.
Dr. Maida basically correct, except we did not spend the full $30,000, but professional service contract by Statia, one year. So it's, this was not made on us?
This is...
Contract.
Okay, so it's a private consultant that we have.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I'm just wondering, is it 96, 97.8, what is it, 98.6?
And so question, Dr. Wanko, do you feel, and I would guess, Mr. Vargou, do you still feel that we need this consultant on payroll?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay, I'm just wondering. I don't want to be the...
Right, okay. Yes, B-9, yeah.
And I guess we should do B-8 and B-9 together because they kind of piggyback.
I'm only, I'm only asking this question now because this wasn't at, this was not on the finance agenda.
Correct, it wasn't.
So, I mean, I'm kind of finding out with everybody else. Do you feel, you feel that this person is needed, is required?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Why?
Same reason I brought this person in last year. Even more so now because we do not have a permanent B-A.
Fair.
And we also have an accountant who's leaving us December 20th.
That's where I was getting, that's where, that's where, that's where I was hoping you would go.
Well, now it makes sense because we have a fever of like 103.6 right now, and we need somebody to kind of reduce that fever down.
This is your fault, input temperature on the resolution. All right, so...
So input temperature.
I apologize to the board. I should run with the fact that we're going to be without an accountant and a B-A. B-10, yesterday, we had bids. One of them was the Lincoln School pool filtration, and we're ready to bring that to the boards. We had four bids. You'll see a high and a low. And as you could see, it's to be awarded to Ray Palmer Associates. All their paperwork is in order, and they were the low bid.
No one from Bayonne bidded, huh?
Uh, no.
Bayonne Pool didn't put in bid?
Nope.
I just want it done before we're swimming on air in Prospect Avenue.
Oh, I agree. You know what? I just got to say, I am so happy that B-10 is on this agenda right now because I've heard about the Lincoln Pool for two years. We've got to get this going already.
Please be aware that once we empty the pool to do the filter, we'll have to do some patchwork in the pool as well. So that will be coming up probably a meeting or two from tonight.
So this company is emptying the pool?
This company is doing the filter.
Of the whole, and patching as well?
To do it. And while it's empty, that's a good time for us to fix any tiles that need to be replaced or patched.
And that'll be a separate contract?
Yes.
Thank you, okay.
If you notice, the good news, and it's great for the finance committee, is we've always thrown that number of $500,000 around. You could see where it came in.
And it's under, so...
We are under, under budget.
Temperature's now...
Next up, B-11.
Doing better.
This was an add-on, and this is through the co-op. We're buying cafeteria tables. Okay, so this doesn't have to go out bid per se, but we do it through our New Jersey co-op.
Is this, is it B-11?
B-11.
All right, you know, it's what, do we have an example of these tables? Where is this, where is this going? What's cool?
Mr. Vargou, my cafeteria table resolution?
Going to Robinson.
Robinson?
Robinson.
Well, the reason why I ask is trustee Finnerty and I had a really nice day together, actually. It was lovely. Thank you for accompanying me. We went to many schools and visited the lunch program at the request of Dr. Wanko, or suggestion, I should say. And we had the privilege of going to Lincoln School and Bayonne High School with Mary J. It was just a really nice day. And one of the things we noticed was some of the tables in the senior calf were not exactly handicap friendly, I should say, the way the configuration of it was. So I was kind of hoping that these tables went to that, but I guess not, so...
These are a safety issue on these. These are the ones that filled up into the...
Okay, okay.
That we'll look at what you...
Yeah, in the senior calf. Okay, so...
Well, Bayonne High School, this is not...
This is Rob, yes.
Take a look.
Right, right. Okay, so I just wanted to make sure we weren't purchasing that particular table because I saw...
No, no, these are the ones that...
These are the ones that fold. Got it.
Thank you.
Yes, ladies and gentlemen, we pay attention to tables here.
We'll take care of that last resolution for finance inside. I'll move ahead to personnel. C-1, we're going to do inside. There's been a revision. Resolution C-2 is being moved to non-consent. I'll ask you to take a look at C-3. It's been updated since the last version that you guys received. It is the same version that went out online, but from the committee meeting, it's a different If there's any particular questions for Mr. Copaz and myself on the coaches' resolution.
What we're saying here, though, Dr. Munoz, with the introduction of the Genesis system, we'll know when people clock in and when they clock out.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Also, remember that paperwork trails cannot move along on the computer unless the proper check and balance has been achieved.
Just to clarify on that, trustee, we're using a protocol in overtime right now. When an employee puts their pin number, it'll take their picture. Genesis loves that, that process. They don't have that implemented yet. So we're working on the backend to have in overtime communicate directly with Genesis. So that will be one system. To answer your question, though, an employee will not be able to even enter a payroll sheet online if they're not on a resolution approved to work. So they won't have the option to drop down to the payroll.
And the bottom line is, Dr. Wanko will never see a, anything like that unless everybody signed it prior to him, or it just wouldn't get that far.
So that goes along with trustee Munoz said before, that some of the problems that occurred, this will hopefully clean up all of those problems. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Copaz to take a look at C-5, our monthly harassment, intimidation, and bullying report.
Thank you, Dr. Maida. The report is with the bail board of education policy 5502. During this reporting period, five incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying have been reported and investigated, and one incident at Nicholas Elstall. There was no confirmed evidence of the investigated act of H.I.P. Strategies, resources, and remedial measures were implemented. All documentation is being retained by the school anti-bullying coordinator. Four incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying have been reported, investigated, and confirmed. Two at Woodrow Wilson, one at Henry Harris, and one at Nicholas Elstall. Strategies and resources have been provided to the victims to assist in recovery process. Consequences and remedial measures were given to the offender. All documentation is being retained by the anti-bullying coordinator of the school.
Anything?
Okay. Moving along, resolution C-6, since the committee met, another staff member was added to the list. So originally, the resolution was Sonia Barton. Now, Mary Ann Greenman is being added to the resolution. So that's the change on C-6. Going to ask you to go all the way to C-12. We had two previous agreements with the San Diego Center of Princeton. There's a third for a separate classified student. So that's been added since the committee meeting. And as you noticed...
Carol.
On this side, Carol.
They moved you, Carol.
Nikkel jumped in.
They moved you. See, you're not here on time. They do you. They do you.
As you noticed on the resolutions, we've switched over to ID numbers.
Yes.
Okay, I'll ask you to turn to C-15, which is an addition. This is for consultation, Brett DiNovey, who's on our previous resolution, but this is for a different child behavioral consultation at a rate of $135 per hour. And you'll see a breakdown. And then that'll take us to C-19. It's also what is done at the committee. And this is for teacher assistance for special service students. And you'll see a breakdown, $12 an hour for the school year, and there's one staff member on the resolution. And then I have two others, C-23 and C-24, but they're going to be for inside. So at this time, if we could turn to C-2. Even though I'm moving it to the consent agenda, I just need a trustee to move in second for me. I'll move.
Second.
Thank you. Sorry.
I'm moving right out of there.
President, that's all I have for outside. If there's any other business?
Yes.
Not hearing any, we're going to turn to a closed session for legal personnel negotiation items at 7:08, and the board will...